Hey, thank you. Good evening and welcome. This is the Town Promotion Committee. I've forgotten my date, the 11th of June. I have apologies from councillor Steve Alford. Do I have any other apologies? No, thank you. Do we have any declarations of interest? No, thank you. Item three, can we approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the Town Promotion Committee held on the 9th of April 2025 as a true record? Can I have a proposer in a second, please? Councillor Huxby, in a second, sir?
Councillor Nick Stacey.
Does everyone agree? That's you, Dean. That's all? Agree?
Yes, agreed.
Agree to the minutes? Do you agree to the minutes?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's all agreed, thank you. Okay. Don't, oh, yeah, please, don't worry. Okay, so straight into item four, Town Promotion Update. From the Town Centre and Tourism Manager, please.
So, because of the time scale Dean suggested, and Simon and I both jumped at the chance to just do a verbal update, because we just didn't have the time to write our reports for you guys to have them in the statutory five days or whatever it is. So, just a quick run through on council and community events. For May, obviously we had the Day and Operation Dynamo. We continue to promote them through social media with the Town Council and Visit Ramsgate and the Ramsgate Events Calendar. We've gone back to 1,000 copies of the Ramsgate Event Calendar printed each month. On average, that's also been downloaded around 200 times from the website. Ramsgate Day is being organised by Susie Humphries, you all know Susie, and will take place on the 5th of July in line with Independence Day, spelt T apostrophe S, not American Independence Day. And that's about supporting independent businesses, which fits very nicely with the brief around Ramsgate Day's original idea. That's going to be happening in the town centre and businesses are getting involved all around town. Addington Street, down in here, in Harbour Parade. So they're trying to widen the focus, so the focus isn't just in the town centre. That's on 5th of July. We do want volunteers, particularly litter pickers. If anyone's available between 10 and 5 on that Saturday, we will supply you with a hoop and a picker. Carnival is 26th and 27th of July. And I think it's worth mentioning in here that the new route is not going to include East Cliff. And this has been something that's been discussed for the last year. And a decision has been made that it will not take into account the East Cliff. And there's quite a few reasons for that. And having lived on the East Cliff for 18 years, it used to be really well supported around the bandstand. And that's it. There's nowhere else for people to really support it. And the deer of walk's got very difficult because you have to have just one vehicle at a time. And it blocks and makes it very stuttering for the carnival as you go up the hill. It's changed. Things aren't the same as they were when you just had a flow. And it's really changed in the last five years. And also, from Plains of Waterloo down to King Street, there were no spectators. So it was a very long part of the route that wasn't even well supported, apart from that one section. So obviously, that section of the community, it was really important that they know that it's being brought down. And it's other reasons too. It's around climate change, it's around more people walking the parade rather than sitting in scaffold trucks or whatever. Less floats. And it uses less fuel. All of those things is taken into account. But it's also because of the more diverse community that are supporting it, some who have mobility issues. So all of those things have been considered. And this year, as far as I'm aware, it will be the new route where you come down Royal Parade, across the mini roundabout, and you turn left up into Harbour Street and then up Queen Street.
Rebecca, can I just confirm, obviously, that's going to be as well advertised as possible? And will that change beyond? Can we make sure that that changes on the posters and any other? Anything else that goes out? I mean, the ward councillors for Samos Montefiore in particular, because they're more, actually, probably as affected as East Cliff as well.
Or East Cliff, I'd say.
Actually, more East Cliff, isn't it? So I still think Samos Montefiore, that we need to put it on our pages as well.
Yeah. I mean, it's important because that route's been the same for 20-plus years. It's changing for a reason.
It's that juddery staggering of it that is caused by legal changes.
It's the medea, that's really accelerated the decision, I think. But there are other reasons why they were working towards that. But funnily enough, it came in, it was mentioned in the litter forum my last meeting because they have volunteer litter pickers for that. And it's talked about the design and making sure people are really, really clear on the route. Didn't know about it, did they? In the litter pickers. No. Parade will be at the usual time, 4 o'clock. It is going over two days. There'll be Giants again. And the horses, I can't think of their name. What are they called? Hood and Horses. Hood and Horses. The group may be changing their name this year. Not the branding, because that worked really, really well. But they're considering a New Year's Eve event for Ramsgate and may be submitting a bid for consideration. Had a meeting with them last week. Other things, so we're looking, this is just a report on the new budget heading. So maintenance in the town centre. Obviously, we're going to have a separate report on the lighting projects, including the feeder pillar. We've now got all our bench ends back. So there's 20 orange ones are being installed and then that'll be all of them. The artwork at Abbott's Hill is now installed and has black frames around it. And just hot off the press, we've transformed some old beer kegs into planters. These are going to be available for businesses. So they're in the same colours as the bench ends. There's going to be red ones as well. So they can have them dotted around the town. So it's another addition of colour in the town centre. That's a town team project and has been funded through them to complement the ones that the Town Council did and they're still doing. And then the launch of our obelisk and harbour arch lights. Obviously, that happened during the Operation Dynamo events. And then they changed colour on Saturday for the next two weeks for Pride Month. And then for Armed Forces Day, they'll go back to red, white and blue for the last part of the weekend, for obvious reasons. At the moment, the obelisk is also the rainbow colours. And so are the arches. And that's an hourly show, so it goes on for about five, seven minutes of dancing colourful lights. And then they're set to warm white. So that's those updates. And then just, I know not everybody could make it to the Operation Dynamo event. So I've done a bit of a presentation, overview of the main events and a little bit of information about economic impact. So, as you know, in July, I was approached on behalf of Royal Tempio Club to represent the Town Council to look at coordinating the 85th anniversary. And that was approved in September 2024. And then went further to discuss actually investing a big chunk of our events budget in to sort of make it a really special event. It's been 10 years. And also with a view to encouraging the Little Ships to come to Ramsgate a bit more often. So these are some of the planned events coming up. And Ramsgate, the heart of Dunkirk Little Ships, is a strapline that was agreed and was what you would see on the logo, on badges and stickers. We had 1,500 of them. Every single one of them's gone. I've still got people asking for them. And this is just a little bit of timeline. So by September, having had initial meetings in July, by September, we had over 30 local organisations wanting to be part of it in all sorts of different ways. And some national organisations as well. In December, we also involved the Heritage Harbour Group, which is supported by Ramsgate Society. And they helped with some of the comms. And then once the, once all of those events were coordinated and had been developed enough, we could start looking at putting together the promotion, which was quite tricky. Things like the air display only happened in the last, I think I had seven weeks' notice. In fact, the District Council were very supportive in trying to get that through. But it started off as one play and then ended up as, what, five? We should have expected, but we were expecting two Spitfires. And so in March, the press releases went out to everyone from local to national and sky and what have you. So then had to sort of deal with the media in a different way as well. List of the main organisations. So obviously, this started off with Associations Dunkirk Little Ships and Royal Tempio Club, who work really closely together. We're very lucky here that the Commodore for the ADLS is, lives in Ramsgate and has a Little Ship moored in Ramsgate permanently. The Tunnels were also excellent in all the work they did. Work supported by our ally and of course, the group, the large group. Grandville Theatre, we ended up having that mini film festival, which, considering we didn't, we aren't having a film festival this year, it was great that we could keep the momentum going on the film festival. Our Air France Museum supplied the Spitfire, which was incredibly popular. And then Navy Wings from down in Hampshire Way, they were the guys that approached and said, we can do an air display. And then, you know, it was just a matter of making sure I had all the documentation and they just kept building on it. So we really created some good new relationships as well. So in terms of the work that I had to do, in terms of admin, there were so, over 51 documents were uploaded onto the event app. And then there was also parking suspension and all the other requests that I had to do to get things over the line. With this initial new, it's not a new event, but it's a record event in terms of how many Little Ships came. So we decided to invest in the new logo design and that's something that we can use for future. And of course, we were lucky with organic promotion because people were very engaged. And then latterly, we had a lot of TV and radio engagement. Fanick District Council with Thaite Tourism, Julie Edwards, was excellent. Attended events from the outset. And also had the comms team got involved and supported me with the media in particular. And Matthew Kenny, as you probably all know, is excellent and really got behind this and attended most of the events, most of the meetings that happened leading up to the events. Budget. So at the moment, we are on budget. We've had a few, you can see in the red there, we've had some sponsorship. We had a lot of, if you took the value of things that people gave for free, like standing with Giants, their artwork you saw in one of the first, in one of the first frames, they, that was all done for free. They've created two lots of those. And then Fujifilm, through a contact at Ramsgate Tunnels, produced them all for free. So just those two things alone, the value would be in tens of thousands of pounds. So we've had a lot of goodwill. Navy Wings, if you hire a Spitfire for 10 minutes, it's £3,000. All of that was free. So, you know, we had the only surviving airworthy ferry Swordfish in Ramsgate. Getting the Royal Marines here, again, that's through the commitment of organisations in Ramsgate that really wanted this to be a special event. And that was through the Royal Naval Association, Colin Powell specifically. And also Kim here, helping with the civic side and dignitaries. So, yeah, goodwill is difficult to quantify, but we got a lot of bang for our buck, basically. So this is one of the highlights. And if any of you that did attend the Little Ships in Concert, it was, took about 10, 15 minutes. So this is a little bit scrambled, this video. But it's really well done by Keith Ross, who also designed our Visit Ramsgate website and logos. We work quite a bit with Keith. And the Little Ships in Concert, it starts with a piece from an ex-skipper called Ronald Tomlinson. And it was an extract taken from his, an audio extract of his account of Operation Dynamo. And it was really, really poignant and it blasted around the harbour. We probably, we don't know the numbers yet, but we are expecting them. But I would say there's in excess of 3,000 people watching this particular piece of music that was composed by a local composer, Donna McKevitt. The ideal around this. It's my dad, by the way, on the right, not Winston. Green flag men, all the boats in the whole harbour had to start sounding their horns. So that was kind of condensed what the actual challenge. One of the largest Little Ships that's actually still boat. So that is another example of goodwill. Because when that was costed properly and they put in a bid, which they didn't get, so paying the musicians their rate, the trump there is an international counter. The opera singers are both very well known in the opera world. And that was costed around 17,000, including our matched fund of three. And all of the musicians still did it, even though they got paid the minimum that you can pay a casual performer, which is £203 a day. And that includes travel, refreshments, everything else. So that event, seeing that on, came to around 4,000, when really it was a £20,000 production. I know it doesn't necessarily feel like that from those snippets, but we were.
Will you go on to the next slide? Can I just, councillor Nick Stacey?
Can I just ask? I don't know if we have or not. And if we haven't, I'd really like us to, to be able to, as a council, write to the people that gave goodwill, to say thank you so much, the Navy Wings and these offices.
Thank you for asking that.
As a, from the council, because I think that's quite important that we acknowledge their time and effort, you know, and because obviously they've done it now. But they need to know that we're very grateful. And I think that needs to be quite an official letter.
Yeah.
I know that's a lot of work for the councillors. And I'm sure there's an awful lot of people we need to be writing to. But I do think that's quite important and say thank you as a Town Council.
Has anything been, the mayor has set the rolling. And I've got, started the list, but it is a huge list. And it's just being added to all the time. But that is something that we will be doing. And, you know, I think there were 10 of these professional musicians that attended and were part of this and they have invoiced. But for the expense, there's things like hiring the sound equipment, which went all the way around the harbour. We are going to have a proper, very clean edited copy of this, which the Town Council will own. We did amazingly manage to get an edited version on a flash drive that went down to a Little Ship at 11:30 at night on the 20th of May and went over on a Little Ship at 6am the next morning to give to the mayor of Dunkirk as a gift from Ramsgate. So that was another thing that I really wanted to happen and they made it happen. So it's, that's another example of the amazing goodwill. And the tunnels are mostly of volunteers. And the work that, special mention to Steve Pankas, because the work he did around his displays, just amazing. Working with Lynne quite closely. They, their events went on for the whole 10 days. And the Tommy decals, which you can still see around town, you can scan the QR and find stories about personal stories, but also stories about, obviously, the Operation Dynamo. So, all of the events, by and large, that are on there took place, some of them not when we expected, because we're dealing with weather and the sea conditions. And that was, of course, a challenge in getting them here. And then coming back, both times were challenging for different reasons. So the other highlights, but again, somebody just approached. Now, the Royal Harbour projections on the Maritime Museum, I know quite a few of you did get to see, were incredible. They were so poignant. That was a £15,000 grant that he, but we didn't pay anything for that. So these, you know, our pocket of money went a long way, but it was also an awful lot of goodwill to put on something.
There was a lot of good research into that also. Who did the research?
So Howard Griffin worked, he's in Ramsgate. He worked with Imperial War Museum and this is something he does for a living. And it's.
It's really good, the fact that it was able to get images of the actual people. And that's really good research.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
So the music, Rebecca, you were just talking about. Could you get that published on the website or can we sell it?
So Dean, we won't be able to sell it. It will be available for free for people to listen to. So we'll probably keep it on our YouTube channel.
Yep.
And that, and we'll promote it through social media. So hopefully, people will want to hear. Because actually, the whole thing, it actually started with the air raid siren, but it got drowned out, even though the harbour went silent for it. Everything, everybody turned everything off for the Little Ships in Concert. The Ferris wheel went off, the phone were there, everything. But the siren, just because the wind, it didn't carry. But it will be on our copy, which they are still editing to get absolutely right. So we've got a really nice, clean copy of what they were trying to achieve. Councillor Shaw?
Yeah, I'll say thanks to everybody because it was a fantastic weekend. I'd like to be involved, but at the moment, I'm a care for my eldest brother who's in a wheelchair. He probably hasn't been 83. He was in a care home. So I haven't come to us and that was a fantastic, I did go down after and before her. But it was fantastic. If only I'd looked at the people in her heart. Thanks everybody.
Dad, I mean, the parades, I was dubious about doing parade, but they were amazing. And how they managed to pull those off, particularly getting the Royal Marines here. That is such a coup. They've not been to Ramsgate for decades, as far as I'm aware. In fact, it's, obviously, there's a lot of security around the Royal Marines. I think all of us were out there marshalling for that one. But, you know, it was so well attended. And that was the other thing, people were saying, oh, parade on a Tuesday morning, who's going to come to that? Well, it was packed down here. Medway Queen had one of their best ever days from ever. Not just in Ramsgate, but, you know, it was so busy.
Councillor Huxby?
I could add a point, the media coverage nationally was very good. It's on BBC National News and things like that.
Yeah.
And ITV and the local news.
Yeah, I do, I do sit to come to that in a second. The, so I tried to get, because what I really wanted was the new footfall data from Fanick District Council, which they've invested in this Visitor Insights, it's called. And it will give us really, anyone that has a smartphone, which probably we all do at this table and most people do, it will provide the data. So we'll know exactly, down to say a few percent, how many people were at the event and we can compare it. It will also go back five years. So it's really useful data to show.
Weather spins.
What happens when, I mean, weather spins were incredibly busy. They didn't fill this out though. But this, just to give us an idea, it's a snapshot of nine businesses. Some of them were in military parade, but most of the ones that responded were from Harbour Parade. So over a third said that they had over 50% extra. In fact, because it only went up to over 50%, which is my mistake, some of them had 300% more. So I know one business has actually told me their turnover and it was threefold for the week leading during the Operation Dynamo events. Sales, again, similar figures, you know, up to 50% extra turnover. Two that said that they didn't notice the increase. Those two actually, one was a property management company. Another one was just open for a private event. And that's, you know, that's what they do.
So. Quick question, Rebecca. On that basis, if you're talking about Harbour Parade and Military Parade, this is going to be the hospitality industry primarily, isn't it? Or is it?
Yes, yes. So again, I've just covered that one. So again, I've just covered that one. I couldn't fit it on the other slide, so I'll stick it in a separate one. So again, people were hired in for the event. Some actually commented that they could have done with far more staff because they just couldn't cope, particularly bars. What that says about us lot. And then just asking them, what aspects of the events did they think contributed to the uplift? So the marketing and obviously that, the increase for traffic were the main ones, which is pretty much what we expected. So again, the maybe, this was a couple of businesses that weren't in Harbour Parade that was. But generally speaking, it was a resounding yes, that, you know, which again, we kind of knew. And in terms of the website, we've, you know, we've had nearly 7,000 views just on the blog alone on the website. And the programme, we produced 5,000, 4,000 of the programme, no, 5,000 sorry of the programme. And it was also downloaded nearly a thousand times. And you can see there the rep, that's the Ramsgate event calendar. In April, that was actually a record number of downloads for the Ramsgate event calendar, 221. For May, which covered it, it was up to nearly a thousand. And then the Facebook views, you have to get a snapshot of over 28 days and that's all it will give you. But we had essentially nearly a million, a million views. And that again is unprecedented. And these were some, so very, you know, just taking a picture. So in fact, that first picture was sent to me by one of the skippers on his way out to Dunkirk. And he just WhatsApp it over and I just said, you know, this picture, Nick Gentry sent me this photo. You can see obviously over the bow, you've got other little ships. And it ended up having 87,500 views. Massive interaction as well on that one, which is interesting. And then again, the little ship coming in then, at this point, we had very few little ships, which I'll explain a couple of the reasons in a minute. And this was on Saturday and so I was so excited to see one. I took a video, a little video of it and it just, people were just so engaged in it. And then this bit fire was our third top, but all of them were in the tens of thousands. It was massive, massive engagement on the events that took place. And then we often hear this putting Ramsgate on the map, but I haven't heard it as much as I heard it anecdotally or from national television, but I really did get the feeling that this, using events around maritime, this really could put Ramsgate on the map. Using advertising value equivalent is a very clumsy tool that's not accurate, but if you were to advertise in where we actually got coverage, we'd be looking in excess of paying £2 million. And those figures are calculated using the information. And I was quite, I was quite conservative about how I worked that out. We had a lot more coverage than I've put BBC, for example. We had more than 13 minutes coverage. So BBC, ITV, BFPS, British Forces Broadcasting Service and Sky News. Sky News and ITV came down for several events. Both of them actually, when you think we were supposed to have the boats come back on the bank holiday Monday and they didn't return till the Saturday, both kept in touch with me about wanting to know. And then came down and filmed it and did some live interviews as well. Locally Academy FM, very, very supportive, as were BBC Radio Kent. Isle of Fanick News was the first one to print my press release. And KNFM went over on the boat, so did ITV and BBC, Good Morning Britain as well next. So we had French TV leading up to it. And lots of the shipping and boat harbours and Maritime Heritage, loads and loads and loads of reports and articles. So really amazing coverage. And then this is a little video of the returning, which had to be a very, very quick call to action. And again, Dean, thousands of people turned up for it, didn't they? These standard bearers just volunteered, they just came running down to do it. The sea cadets got two buglers, they bugled in every single boat. And the boat said, that's really unusual. Normally it's the few at the beginning and they get nothing, all the middle ones and then maybe the last one. So they really thought that was a nice touch. This is the one that lives in Ramsgate, Brownham. While that's showing, I'll just, I was one of the ones down here, crowds watching this. And it was, the thing that struck me was the camaraderie that must have been shared amongst those boat owners as they all arrived more or less together.
Yeah, at the beginning, as they were all bunched up, it was just lovely.
So we ended up for that return, we did, we had 64 that went out, we were hoping to get 70. But for the return, we did have 22, this being the smallest one. Firefly's got one of the lowest drafts of all the little ships. And she is now a permanent member of our harbour. She's now got a permanent mooring, just down here. So we now have two little ships.
I think they interviewed them on BBC?
Yes, yeah, and Sky News that they were interviewed on. Sky News had said that they want to come down for any event that we have, anything that's around the harbour. They loved Ramsgate. We've had lots of positive feedback from media actually. They felt well looked after. This is another little video that Keith put together. So I talked a little bit about the problems we had getting the boats here. And one of the main problems was Teddington Lock. Now, the little ships are moored all over the country and further field. And most of them had to come through Teddington Lock. And there were huge problems with which apparently stemmed from the Environmental Agency. And it caused a big gridlock of little ships.
Where are the locks located?
It's somewhere on Thames, I think.
Teddington Locks, yeah, it's a major lock on Thames. And a big change between the way the tide hits, you've got to get to Teddington Lock for the tide basically.
And some of the little ships were stuck for days.
Yeah.
So it really impacted because they planned this journey for over a year. And they, because they're riverboats, this is the whole amazing thing about Operation Dynamo. They needed to go and have a break at St Catherine's Dock and then looking at sea conditions, it was a huge, huge problem.
Well, all I was going to say is because obviously there's a lot to go through. And so I think, I mean, consideration of the future events, I would suggest we almost keep this bit for another time. Because I think we're not going to do this bit justice.
Yeah.
Unless we really whittle down and debrief and that, do you know what I mean? Because I think that's, that's something for going forward, isn't it?
So yeah, so the reason I put it in is because there is something to look at the legacy.
It needs to be in, but what I'm saying is it needs justice to be done because we need to be able to sit down in a meeting and be able to plan it fully. If we've had a debrief now, which is excellent, and thank you, and thank you again for your time because obviously the weekend was amazing. But I think this is almost like the most important bit, isn't it, as we go forward? And so I don't want it to be the tail end of a report when actually it needs to be the beginning of a meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think the other thing that was in my head was on that same line was we also need to think about the ongoing impact of the changes to do with the levelling up fund that we know about. And bring that into the bigger picture as well. I would also like.
A lot of time on each one of those and I just think we need to.
Yeah.
I would also quite like if, and this will take a little bit of time to pull together, I appreciate, is to actually have a fuller picture of just how much we got in goodwill and what that was a cost if we had, if that whole event had had the full costing.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that that is, I appreciate you having got the information for all of that at the moment. That would be, some of that is still coming in, but it would, I think it would be an interesting addition to those considerations for future events as well. So, yeah.
So yeah, I think the sort of synopsis of this particular slide is that we've got strong evidence that Maritime Heritage and architecture, that Maritime Heritage draws a crowd. And if that's little ships, if there's a story, the gaffer back boats. We've got this Columbus replica, we know how El Galion got how many, 7,000 plus visitors over quite a short period of time. We know that it sells, it sells an area. So put that together with a great welcome and some sunshine and you're on a winner. And yeah, as I said earlier, I do think there's an opportunity that we can really draw from this and sort of.
And that's what I mean, bring us back. That was a summary.
Absolutely.
We can't just do it in one meeting because I think it's far too much because it's been such an important event of ours. I think we need to be able to say, right, that was that. And then let's take this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we've got a really good recap of what went on. And certainly there was some, some of those things I was there for and like I say, probably around the room. You couldn't be in every part of the harbour all the time. So being able to see all the other perspectives.
Yeah.
I saw me on one of the pictures on the video earlier.
Who?
I was watching the, when I was watching the opera.
It's not important, come on.
No, I know, I know.
That's another example of that image.
But I do think, Councilor Nixon, like we need to come back and actually look again. I'm also mindful of what happened last year when you were applying for the road crews for a series of events. And the evidence that we have of the increased footfall and how it's benefited business and the challenges you faced when you tried to set that up before. So I think that's also worth tying in.
Yeah.
Okay, we've asked questions as we've gone. Are there any other questions before we move on?
Can we, can we talk about the carnival?
The carnival?
Only, I'm only observer.
Well, we don't run the carnival.
No.
Well, that changes the carnival, I think.
Anyway, I'll have my say then. I think it's a great shame that we're not going to go past the material waterfall and play in water lits because you've cut the carnival in half. In two years' time, you won't have a carnival. What don't you think about an alternative? Run it from King towards Six Park, pass the bandstand, short boaty port.
Yeah.
Only in my observation. Because you've cut it in half.
It has been cut for a very good safety reason.
It has been come a problem in that area because we've had to have people stopping at the bottom, not being able to go up the hill, it's become very fragmented. And by the time it's hit the town centre, it's become very disjointed. So.
You're going to have more of a problem going up Harbour Street than going up the material. You're going to get fouled up there. Anyway, that's only my suggestion.
Yeah.
Can I just ask?
Yeah.
Who designed, who designed the route?
Who designed the original route? Who designed this particular route?
I think Rebecca, you might know.
Oh, there's no.
Those aren't us?
No, no, no.
Right, it's not, it's not an.
It's not something we have to roll over.
Exactly. It's not our problem. Okay.
At the moment residents won't be able to see most of it. It's happening now, so it is a problem.
That's not.
Hang on.
It's not our decision, it's not our.
You didn't say it was. People flatter them if most of you like as well.
The next thing please.
Yes.
I think it was, we turned on the fire.
Congratulations.
We will move on to the next item. We cannot impact on Carnival route. Sorry Rebecca, did you have any more under your?
No, no, it's just that case.
I'll move on to Simon for Active Ramsgate.
Well, before I start, I just want to say huge congrats to Rebecca. Because that is phenomenal, what has happened over Operation Dynamo. It has been incredible and I said this in our staff meeting as well. But from everyone around the town in those two weeks, people were just talking about how great it was. People who knew I worked for the council, people who didn't know I worked for the council. People across all spectrums of life were just in huge praise of it. And it really has put things on the map for the towns and it's done wonders for the community as far as I can see. So huge congrats to Rebecca and all those involved as well across the council.
Teen effort.
Yeah, a lot of people involved in different ways.
I think we put that as well on the minutes, thanks to Rebecca for all her work.
Yep, obviously. And the donations.
This will pale in significance in the shadow.
It all adds up.
So don't expect it quite the same. Oh, it's disappeared already. Yeah, Active Ramsgate Week, it's, forgive me, this might be a bit sort of scrambled because it was the week after Little Ships and I've been off on toil for most of the week after. So I'm sort of playing catch up. But it's the second time we've run it again since we relaunched it last year. And we stuck with the May half term, which worked quite successfully last year. So then it becomes a bit of a fixture. Obviously that meant it ran straight off the back of Little Ships. And well bled into, didn't it with the, but no bad thing actually because people just saw the activity across town and saw more things going on. So that worked quite well in that respect. But as last year, we had a full, we actually have eight days that we run. And we run through each of our themes, walking, cycling, water sporting, wellbeing and exploring. And then we also pad out some days with kid and family activities, a fun day that we've sort of introduced and a wind down day. We also this year took an opportunity to build in a few new things. Not least, we only just really kind of started the wellbeing strand last year. So we increased that notably with an indoor sound bath and an outdoor sound bath, both of which were phenomenally popular to my surprise. I didn't think they'd be unpopular, but I was surprised how popular they were. So the wellbeing strand is growing and doing well out of our core activities. Also with the fun day, I really wanted to bring in a few more things this year that we don't regularly promote through the rest of Active Ramsgate and to visitors. But I think they're a good way of showcasing other activities and Ramsgate and certainly other providers like. Well, the fun fair has just been relaunched, so it was a good opportunity to get people to that. We've got two bounce parks at Westwood, only one got back to me, so funny enough, we're involved there. And a lot of you may know Celine or Bean, she's known as Bean Spins. She's done other things at other events as well. She's a fantastic kids circus activity leader and I really wanted to bring her in. So we've tried a few new things as well. And in doing that as well, I think if we go to the next slide, we should start off, come back to this in a minute. Yeah, we've actually expanded the programme over the week. We had 15 activities last year, we had 20 this year, so 20 over eight days. So it was quite packed. We were averaging about three activities a day. This year, we got ahead on our promotion, this is a big learning from last year. Obviously last year, we just got it going again, I wasn't long in the post. So our promotion was limited, but our plan was to use last year to gather a lot of material to be ready to promote this year. And that's exactly what we did. So this is just an example of social, different social posts largely based on actual images from. largely based on actual images from last year, so people could see what it was really like. And some people, some people in the work group may have seen this, but Dean, if you could just run that video. This video here we put across Instagram and Facebook. Um, oh, is it going to go? It's disappeared.
Is that the one with the link?
Yeah, that's all of it.
Sorry, I did something.
So this is all based off last year and all the activities we did, and we posted this across Instagram, Facebook. Um about the same time Little Ships stuff was going out, so it was in danger of getting drowned out already because there was so much activity. But it it did really, really well for, you know, something that's not quite national significance like Little Ships.
Um. Can I just say, this, I mean, this is an excellent video and a whole thing for it and well done again. And I just think that this, like, on peak throughout the year just to promote Ramsgate is is quality in itself, it's made.
It's interesting you say that, because a few comments did come out saying, like, not just about the activity, saying, oh, this shows Ramsgate are really good light. And it is, that is part of our plan essentially.
Yeah.
With last year, we were kind of giving off it for now and also we shot more this year of more things. So we'll be promoting the event, but also we've got queued up ready to go, a digital drive that will go over months using all this material and that. And it will bed in places like, you know, YouTube is one of the biggest search engines, so having that there is a great way of just, people will be able to find it. Um so, yes, it's, yeah, that's the plan.
Yes.
Um but off the back of that, I mean, I think that had about twenty thousand views, which is quite good for an organic thing around something that's only really just got going again. And it pretty much maxed out our spaces very quickly. So we're having the promotion digitally and if we go across, again, we did some uh with local media as well, that's Ramsgate Recorder, again, using images from the last year, but they had put on our timetable as well. Isle of Thannet News ran it for us. BBC were interested and we couldn't, they went off the boil and I'm not quite sure why, which is a shame. Um but maybe we can hook them in next year. Um so we were ahead on on promotion, but the other thing we did get right this year as well, largely because of our time, but also learning from last year, was improving the signup process. Very laborious last time, we worked to um have one page on the website, I'm not going to enjoy it here, but you just saw the list and you could have a register and you had a form and you put it in and you were done.
Hmm.
It really smoothed that, um which, yeah, helped signups very, very quickly. And we left the signups open for about two weeks and I had a week before the activities. And we must have filled it most within the first week.
Do you mind me asking too, I mean, is that the beginning of a database of people to promote things to them later on down the line?
Absolutely, so one of the clauses is you will be signed up to our newsletter.
Lovely.
By sign.
Oh, problems, yeah.
It also gives us, uh which I'll touch on a bit, it gives us um geographical data. So we asked everyone for the first half their postcode, so we're seeing that much more granularly. Um I'll also, this this also relates to another point which I'll come back to, um which is our family weekend, the competition which we ran with um England's Coast, which we actually bookmarked the beginning of the week. So whilst we're largely advertised around here, people can come from further, the competition ran nationally and we have a signup list there of about a thousand, was it? I can't remember that many.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred. And I mean, that is properly across the country, that is, you know, up to Scotland and back. Um and the centre, so we've got a really good base for further outreach nationally as well now. There's some key stats, I really want to show you some photos through the week as well from this one, but it's so busy, there's quite a lot to compile, but I will be putting that together for um the working group um and also I will share to the committee in time. There's some key stats and some formatting that's kind of rye, but eight days of activities, twenty twenty activities on offer overall. That's a thirty-three percent increase in the number of activities we actually offered, which is a lot more, and it was a lot to manage, but it also just means we're bringing in more providers, which is good, you know. Um sorry, next slide, please, Dean. Overall, we had around just under two thousand nine hundred spaces applied for. That's not people, because like, say if you're uh applying for the boat ride, you can apply up to four spaces. We had two thousand nine spaces, sorry, around two thousand nine hundred spaces applied for. That's over six hundred percent on last year. So we know it's working in terms of bringing people in.
Hmm.
And it's growing. Similarly, I'm looking forward to actually mapping this properly based on that geographical data, but just looking through it already, last year we had some some information just to know that unsurprisingly, most visitors are from Thannet and then Kent and then a handful from London, but that was about it. This year, we're already seeing that even across Kent, we're reaching a much more broad base in Kent.
Hmm.
We're reaching more across London, so we had a handful from last time, we had north and east and southeast visitors from around London. And we're even reaching as far as Berkshire and Essex with this, in this new dataset. So again, in time, I'm going to be, we can map these quite nicely, so we'll be able to actually see the spread a bit better. Um but we know it's, yeah, it's no, we're just going on. The other thing about the signups um was, and then we, again, a bit of a learning from last year was we really wanted to formalize feedback. Feedback we got last year was totally unsolicited, it was quite surprising that that, excuse me, as many people did come back to us. Really wanted to formalize that, so we had a good base going forward. And we had about over fifty respondents, so people actually taking place, feedback on what, on their activity and their experience. And we asked a few questions, like what went well, what didn't go well, anything else you want to say. But one easy thing we did was just to rank your, rate your experience out of ten. And our average rating across those fifty-one was nine point six. So it was really, really well received.
Yeah, that's very.
Um, yeah, it's, I've been surprised how good the feedback is and how willing people are given to feedback, and if we move on to the next slide, please, Dean. This is, yeah, a small selection. And I think a theme that kept coming up, quite a big theme, was people trying things for the first time and being really thankful that they got to try it for the first time, that they probably wouldn't have done it if it wasn't for the Active Ramsgate initiative. Uh a lot of goodwill in terms of like people saying, please, keep supporting this, both from the council side and to support local businesses, like that one top right, you know, it's a great initiative, gives people the opportunity to do it, but also supports local businesses, which is exactly what it's all about. But these are the people on the other end of it seeing that, so um and then.
Simon, can I ask a quick question? The, I'm going back to the supporting local businesses and the stats. Um it would be useful to have, even if it's fairly informal.
Yeah.
Um to have the same kind of feedback from um some of the local businesses.
Yes.
Particularly the ones that are um, again, around the hospitality, the hotels and things like that. Are they aware of any impact on the business from Active Ramsgate? That would be quite useful.
Yeah, I'll have to think about that, it's a bit trickier, because with our supplies directly, we buy the places.
Hmm.
So there's not a direct link to say, oh, more people then come along to them, it's quite.
I'm not, I'm not thinking of the business.
You're thinking about hospitality, I was supporting.
But beyond that, not, not the businesses that we use.
Yeah.
To provide Active Ramsgate.
Yeah.
But the businesses that are, like, we talk.
And it filters down too.
Businesses don't provide a service, but they might benefit from more people coming in. Do they see an uptick in their um uh their trade during that week?
Yeah.
And and next year um might be a better sense, because it's the split between.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that's a great one to note down for next year. Like, we've built in more formally the feedback directly here, that might be one. It's going to be really hard to tease out from.
You won't, you won't be able to, so.
Yeah.
Um, Council Hudson.
So can you tell me the split between people coming from outside Thannet and Ramsgate?
I will be, I will be able to do that.
Really interesting.
Yeah.
And what, what ones did they go for? Was it like a sort of trend about which?
Yeah.
Which you see, wanted to go for?
I will be able to do that, I can't tell you off the top of my head. I can certainly tell you that, um you know, the proportion outside Thannet has grown, um but it's still largely Thannet, which is always the plan with the week, to bring it in for locals and then we use what we get out of this to reach further out. Um but, yeah, I can certainly give you that, and there are certain things that definitely pull people in far further. So uh this, this has been repeated, the thing that got more than anything else is the boat trip. The boat trip, like, got about eight hundred places applied for, whereas everything else was getting in like hundreds. You know, so that pulls people in, which.
More boats. Well, this was one of the most expensive.
It's, it's, yeah, it is, and similarly, I mean, on expense, the kayak kick. Um so it's, but it is, but I mean, the boaters, yeah, yeah, but even then, like, it still outweighs things by a lot, but it is, it's interesting. I wouldn't have guessed it would have been that, certainly before last year to that came.
And so, yeah, so did you have some like repeaters, people coming and doing the same activities? Who came maybe last year?
We definitely had people, yeah.
They're local people or people from outside the area?
I think repeats would be local.
I think, I have seen a lot of local people coming back, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, uh um but we definitely had, yeah, like I say, m- more people. And again, without trying to like make the feedback too long, the next year might be like, where did you see it? How were you seeing it in the first place? Yeah.
Last time.
Um so we might build that, so that's two things to sort of build in. Um so, sorry.
Just ask as well, I'm not, you know, have you contacted Coast Magazine?
Sorry.
Have you contacted Coast Magazine?
No, did, we did run a piece in Ireland.
I know, but Coast Magazine is national.
Yeah.
Quite interested in a lot of stuff, and I just wonder, I mean, you know, like, it's like the BBC, it's like, it's like another national thing that you want to sort of like attract their interest at some point and you, you know, however you do it, but.
What we can do there actually is, in a way, in a way, like, our promotion had already worked more than enough.
Oh, yeah.
For this.
Yeah.
But it, like I say, it builds up stuff to then go more national and as, as she helped, um Rebecca, like Julie at TDC would help us with that, and they do have, well, they also have, I mean, Coast will be on their radar, but they also have a basically a travel media PR system that they pay service to, that we can access through them, so again, we'll be looking at that for more national things, for more national issues. Um so, yeah, we touched on some of these, some key targets, yeah. It does feel like some, some of the repeat people are coming back, they are seeing it now as an annual thing, it's in the calendar. And we hope to build on that, if we keep it at May half term each year, it will be in people's minds. May half term, still a bit tricky with weather, but it it seems to still be a good bet. Continued positive reception, really positive feedback, and like I said, for many who've not tried things before, and that's part of what we're about, is trying to get people into new activities. Um smooth the process for onboarding, the signups now really easy. Um and we've definitely got an increased reach on numbers and geographical spread of participants by quite a margin. Um for next time, whilst we did get a lot of signups, because it is free, you get a lot of dropouts. So it's very labour intensive to keep people in or keep the places filled, because I get people like just dropping out in that week before and right, right up to the hour. So that gets very labour intensive, I need to think about another way of doing it. I've talked to other providers as well, like Thannet Coast Project, all theirs are free. And they really struggle with it. And then, you know, do you put a price going on it and say, okay, it's almost free, we'll charge you a pound, two pounds, whatever, just to make it a bit more, um, yeah, just, it's like, it's more of an investment for them. Like, um do we have a sliding scale? It's, obviously, it just puts in more barriers, which we don't want it to have to do, but as it gets bigger, we might have to.
Yeah, refundable registration fee?
That's possible, it's a big admin after the fact to do it back, but it's not impossible.
Registration fee.
I mean, I think it's something that really the working group.
Hmm.
And I will think about, right. But again, mentioning Thannet Coast Project, I know what's working from promotional side, because they do a series of like, I think about fifteen, sixteen through the summer, we buy out two of those for Active Ramsgate Week. They'd filled them all after Active Ramsgate Week and they'd barely got any signups for the rest of them. So we know we're working, it's like working on getting people in, but it's the retention issue. Um, yes.
Whilst we're talking about that, just, I'm just going to very briefly mention, and it's really unfortunate that Council of Alben's not here, um but we also have the issue of the licenses for um small um users that is an ongoing issue. I, that we have no answers in, in Council Alben's absence, but I think we need to acknowledge that this is an ongoing issue. What I understand is that it is being discussed at Cabinet, um unless you know any more than that, no.
It's coming to Cabinet.
It's coming, it's coming to Cabinet for discussion. Um but I think we just need to note that, if that's okay. Unless anyone else has got any other knowledge, but notes, no, we'll stick with that then. Yeah, so just acknowledgement of that issue.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, less is more, we went up to twenty this year, that makes it quite a lot of intense. Do we need that many? Maybe we revolve a bit, that's something for me to think about, schedule on next year. Um as I already mentioned, the booking in is good, but trying to manage people after is something we need to look at. Um and the other thing is, beyond AR Week, and I'm conscious getting later, I won't go on too much, but the other two events to update on was the family competition, which we actually bookended the week, starting with the family competition, which was out, went out via the coast, had a really good response. As we said, had the, or fifteen hundred signups and uh people did drop out and we got the family again. And they gave us great feedback as well, they really enjoyed it. Um but maybe it's quite a lot to manage that then running into the week. And maybe that actually gives us an opportunity to move that later in, you know, at the end of the season.
Yeah.
Um to split them out. The other thing that's also kicked off alongside AR Week was um our joint work with TDC on the Big Bike Revival, which is TDC's programme with Cycling UK, uh which is a mix of events, like bike fix events and bike-led community rides and ride leading training, sort of a series event. So we had a fix event on our cycling day in, in Active Ramsgate Week at Harbour Bikes. We had another one at Queen's Head, plus the social ride on the end Sunday of Active Ramsgate Week. So that's kicked it off, uh and that's done quite well, but we'll be promoting that even more. There's going to be another one, another social ride at the end of June. Um so they kind of were alongside AR Week, so I've learnt my lesson to not do that again.
Hmm.
Um, we've got other things to update on in time, I think that's probably enough for now. But any questions, please fire away.
Thank you. I, I think, got no indication for questions, I think we've, we've covered everything, we've raised a couple of extra questions. In which case I will hand over to Dean, who's going to um.
Okay, so Town Promotion has two former working groups, that's Active Ramsgate Working Group, Town Enhancement Working Group, uh standard procedure every year is to re-establish those if committees choose to do so and assign chairs, vice chairs, reference, membership and agree the dates. Um the first one, Active Ramsgate, because there's been a change of frequency to these meetings every month. Um it's just doubling up on workload, so we're going to have just one every six months for Active Ramsgate. Just because reports like Simon's can come directly to this meeting and request any, any approvals. Uh so the dates are there, um so I don't know if you want to go through the recommendations.
I will just add that uh one of the other reasons for reducing the number of Active Ramsgate Working Group meetings was because of successful changeover from using external contractors to run Active Ramsgate to bringing it in-house. Um and in discussion with Simon and Rebecca, um it was felt that they would find a continuation of the working group useful. Um but we're happy that we would reduce it down, that they have ongoing contact with. But they have ongoing contact with all the necessary officers, um, in between those meetings. Um, so that, that's the other side to it, as well as, as the increase of the Town Promotion Committee back up to what it was before. Um, do we have anyone, uh, I mean, is everyone happy if, uh, myself and councillor Hudson are chair and vice chair of the two working.
Absolutely, delighted.
I'd say no objections from councillor Nixie there. Um, so if, if everyone's happy, we will continue, um, doing that. Sorry, I jumped into you, your little bit there.
That's all right. All right. We can do them out of order. That's fine. Um, so you just need to propose a second for the terms of reference.
Propose. Second.
Sorry, yeah.
Post second, yeah.
Yeah.
Those in favour.
All in favour.
Yeah.
And, uh, membership, which I think currently or was existing is councillor Crittigan, councillor Hudson, councillor Albon. If you want the membership to stay decided.
That's for the, um, Active Ramsgate Working Group. Are you happy?
Yes, it needs twice a year, isn't it?
It is only twice a year now.
I think I can manage that.
Um, thank you.
You want to propose it?
Yes, please, yeah.
And.
Second.
Second and all agreed. Thank you.
Yep. And then to be agreed the dates of those, which is first of July and January.
I think we have some proposed dates already, don't we, Sam?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Yep.
Same again. Yeah.
Perfect.
All agreed. Thank you.
Okay, the second one is the town enhancement, same process again. Uh, the wording for the introduction's been changed. Removal of additional mint taker because it is myself and the two dates that have been put in there. So it's the same thing again.
I'd just add that, uh, that the primary change on the wording is in the introduction. Um, last year was a transition year from, um, what was originally the Open Spaces Strategy Group into the Town Enhancement Working Group. Um, and so therefore, uh, most of that changes reflects the fact that this is now ongoing rather than, um, making that, that step change there. So, and we've been operating without a minute taker, so we figured that we could carry on without a minute taker. Um, councillor Hudson and I cobble something together between us for that working group usually.
Thank you.
Um, sorry.
So proposal for terms of reference.
Well, I'll propose and second and agreed. Thank you.
Uh, nomination of chair and vice chair.
I'd like to nominate that it's exactly as it is.
Okay.
Thank you. Second up, our second up, agreed. Thank you.
Uh, to agree the membership, which I believe is councillor Crittigan, councillor Hudson and councillor Ara.
Well, councillor Ara's not here. Um.
Like in.
I can always drop her an email if you're happy.
I'd like to propose with the acceptance of councillor Ara.
Yes, yeah. Um.
I don't want to do a disservice by nominating.
Please not, um. So the, the membership of the, uh, of Town Promotion is councillor, who are not here, is councillor Albon, councillor Ara and councillor Pat Moore. Um, so I can't imagine councillor Albon or councillor Moore are likely to want to jump into it. So we'll just check with councillor Ara that she's happy to continue.
Yeah.
If not, it will be you or councillor Albon, councillor Nixie, with that opportunity.
I was gonna say, not in the daytime, it won't be, yeah.
But no, um, we will check with councillor Ara and resolve that.
Perfect. And to propose a second to agree the dates.
Yeah. Agreed.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Done.
Thank you.
We, do, we don't need you anymore?
That's a bit like website.
Yes, you may, you may leave the table. Thank you, thank you, Simon. Right, item seven, back to you Rebecca.
Um, so yes, this is just a report back on two of our decorative lighting projects. And just really an update, but also to, um, to take to committee to get, uh, seek approval of potential extra funding that may be needed. Um, so just briefly, the, the, the decorative lighting in the town centre, the plan was that that would stay on mainly the warm lights, first things, big lights would stay on all year round. Unfortunately, a- almost to the day of the epiphany, when they would normally go off, sixth of Jan, um, KCC came along and removed the feeder pillar that we were sharing.
Hmm.
Um, few miscommunication really. Um, and, um, the, the new one will not accept the cable size or amperage that we require for our lights. So we've, we've attempted, we've had site meetings with them, we've looked at other ways. But actually, the only way we really can be sure that we have our own metered supply with our own MPAN number, which is the, um, meter point administration number, which is very important for, for when you're trying to set up something new. Um, is to have our own feeder pillar.
Yeah. Do we not agree on that in another meeting though? I thought we'd gone past that.
We, we did, but unfortunately it's, it's, the costs have now come in and they are more than we expected. So we, we guestimated that they'd be around eight thousand. Um, unfortunately, there's a potential that it could come in. And this is with a fifteen percent contingency. Um, two of the, the contractors that needed have given me a verbal estimate. Um, they don't think it will be any more than that, but they've overestimated. Um, both companies that we know and we, we've worked with several times before. So the, the revised price with a fifteen percent contingencies is actually thirteen thousand five hundred and seventeen pound and ten p. Um, which sounds a bit odd as it's, some of it's guestimate, but some of it's accurate. Um, so, so the, the problem is, of course, without the feeder pillar, we don't have our new lights.
Can I, can I have a bit of the word of space?
Hang on a minute, can I, councillor Nixie first, I had.
So, um, I note through Town Clerk, um, that, you know, have access to suitable budgets for these projects. I think it's, I think it's crucial. We are capable, we, uh, first of all, let me, I, I want to say the lighting is outstanding. And, uh, you know, it's just getting better and better. And I'm really proud of the work that, you know, we as a few, Rebecca and so on and so forth are doing. So, and people talk about it again, it's one of those things that is putting Ramsgate on the map. And especially when it came to the winter, for example, Mark Ettingbald says had nothing on us, he were incredible. And so we have to make sure that that is safe. And if it costs an extra five grand, then so be it, to get that security done. So I would propose that we, um, accept the new revised total, for example. Make sure that we can, you know, find the money and, and go through council to be able to, to get that.
Before we go further with that, I, um, while councillor Shonk speaks, and then I do have a question, if you don't mind. That I'd like, I, I want to raise because, and Rebecca knows I'm going to raise it because we've already had this conversation.
What happened with KCC? What was that reason? Was there a reason for all that?
It was to do with upgrading, so the.
Well, what can they go up with it?
They, they, they.
They take it down?
They upgraded it to a newer, smaller feeder pillar than the one that was, had been there for decades. Um, and it's basically, it has four mil cable and a much smaller amp inside it. There isn't, there isn't, we need twenty five mil cable to accommodate the quite large amount of power we need to supply so many lights.
Would it be worth me asking, KCC, might we not spend that many?
Well.
I mean, that's what I'm there for.
We, um, we did speak to the manager of street lighting about it and unfortunately they, they weren't prepared to replace. And it would mean digging up again, so it, they, they've already, we've kind of been around asking like the management of, of, um, Kent County Council, Sue Kinzella and, and her colleagues. And they've been very good. They just can't see a way around it. And the other important thing about a shared feeder pillar is that we also at the same time discovered that actually, if we're sharing, it's very difficult to meter out the electricity. So we're not independent. And, and it's important, obviously, from a council that we are very clear about how much we're spending on the supply of electricity for our lights. So, so there was another problem with the previous.
Um, maybe it's an obelisk.
The obelisk is, is, um, something that we, we've worked out on wattage, um, and, and kilowatts per hour.
We don't know what's what at the moment. It's only joking, I'm, I'm honest.
I, I think councillor Shonk, it was a case of KCC were putting in the new feeder pillar to meet their needs. But in order to meet our needs as well, it would have needed something more expensive. And they weren't prepared to spend the extra when it wasn't meeting their needs. I think if I was to do that in a nutshell. Um, the other thing I wanted to, to raise, um, with Rebecca, um, and I have done this by email already, so she knows the question's coming. Um, the recommendation is to use the decorative lighting maintenance budget. Now, when we did the budget setting last year, uh, one of the things that, um, Rebecca and I discussed at some length was the fact that we'd been hit with some very late, quite seriously expensive maintenance issues. Because we hadn't been spending on maintenance issues for a, a number of years, to the extent we should have. And so, um, I would like the justification for halving the maintenance budget. Um, so we, we just need to acknowledge that and, and I'm not objecting to the, the, the use of that money. But I think we do, and it is important that we maintain maintenance. So we're only two months into the budget, second, we're only two months into the budget, three months. Um, and I'm concerned that we do maintain the electrical main decorative lighting maintenance, particularly as it has become bigger and more important. Councillor Nixie, do you want to comment first?
I, I just can also, I think we can't ignore the fact that the lighting also covers the beautification area.
Well, that is unification, yeah.
Do you know what I mean? It's like, because that's quite, you know, so I'm just trying to think about where you're getting your money from.
Yeah.
See if there's a scope for that, but yeah, you're.
Yeah, that's a good point. Um, can't remember what our, our beautification elements are. I think it's.
Twenty grand, isn't it?
It's quite, I just think that it's, it's only a couple of grand, whatever it is, lighting is beautification as much as anything else.
So that we find this money.
Yes.
Um, I'm with that. I'm just wary that we don't skip on maintenance and that's all. So, um, if there's another, have we got the spare money in beautification?
Yes, we have. We have got some funding in beautification. But what I would say is that these quotes, because we've been hit with extra things, we've tried to really cover this in a very broad way. So for example, energy supplying connection for the decorative lighting for York and Queen Street, we've estimated at four thousand. But actually, that is also using an old supply. And I've gone back to Saunders and our technician, Chris Quint, who works closely with them, and suggested that if we've got a new feeder pillar, we can just tag this onto that system, thereby not needing to spend another four thousand. So there's ways that this may come in under.
So what I would suggest, tying together what councillor Nixie and I both are saying, is that we accept this transfer, or we accept the use of this money from the maintenance budget with a view to the fact that it may be that the beautification budget generally is able to supplement the decorative lighting budget at a later date, so that we have some flexibility around those things. Can we do that, Dean? Can we make that decision?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you happy with that?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, councillor Hudson.
Some note from Town Clerk. So what does that actually mean? Which budget is?
Yes, um.
Suitable budgets that can be used for each budget.
Wrong. Yeah, so she's effectively, I think she's agreeing with what we've just said. Is, is that your interpretation?
If you're asking for it to come, say, from the, uh, main contingency budget that's done by council, you'd have to put a request in because it's done by Town Promotion, you're just basically swapping.
Yeah, we're, we're moving it around Town Promotion rather than from external into Town Promotion, so.
So can you add it to our running total? Because last year I got completely confused about.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's all that way and all the rest of it.
I got confused as well.
Yep.
Got very confused. And one of the things on, on that subject, uh, I will mention, it's one of the things that Dean, Rebecca and I have agreed is that we're going to meet four times a year in between budgets, so that we can actually keep track of that, um, rather than doing it all in one lump.
Okay.
But, but halfway through, so, um, yeah.
I did do.
Yep. Need a second.
Sorry, what was the, can you remind, I thought we covered it.
To accept the, uh, maintenance budget.
I thought I'd just done that.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Remember, yeah, so that, that was saying, we haven't got seconded for that.
I'll second it.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Sorry, I thought we, I, I, I thought you seconded it and everyone would agree. My apologies.
I amended it. You said, okay, yes, but we definitely haven't voted on it. We didn't have a second.
My apologies. That, then I've gone around in a few circles, so, okay. I amended it.
Yeah. You seconded it, so you just need to say it all over the face.
It's free.
Right, love. Thank you. Cheers.
You're okay with everything that we've.
Yes, the, there's two in that one. Christmas and summer lights for the shortfall for the York Street and Queen Street kind of jumped ahead. So there's that one as well, which is of the three thousand two hundred.
And, and that's a, a similar issue in that we've, the contingency is actually in three thousand three hundred.
Yeah.
Um, but we anticipate it will come in under, but it is, at the moment, there's a, there's a possibility we could go over the approved, I think it was around twenty three thousand, was it Dean, the original?
Yep.
So it, it is, it was just again to make sure that committee were happy that we might have this firing.
Only the same question as for the other one is, are you confident that, um, it, the money can be, um, afforded out of the Christmas summer lights budget?
Yeah.
In which case I will propose that we accept the recommendation. And everyone, great, thank you. We, I've got that one in the right order. Thank you.